Okay, we're on. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November zoning board meeting. Tonight, we have several cases. We're going to be hearing variance requests and I don't believe we have a special exception, just variance request. Normally, how we conduct business is that I will read the case, then I will ask that the applicant come forward, and I'll ask you to confine your remarks to 15 minutes or less. Be short, concise, and to the point, please. Then I'll ask for anyone who wants to speak in favor of the appeal, and I'll ask for anyone who wants to speak in opposition to the appeal. Then I'll get comments from code enforcement, and then we'll close the case, debate it, and decide, usually that evening. Then I'll proceed to the next case. We have an issue tonight with, as you can see, there's only four of us at the moment. I expect a fifth member to show up soon. So, we can either begin with a four-member board, for anybody who wants to be heard by a four-member board. You are, however, entitled to be heard by a five-member board. And should we deny a case, grounds for appeal would not be available to you because we only have a four-member board. So, you need to decide if you want to be heard by a four-member board or a five-member board. I also have a conflict tonight with a case involving 3.1 Advantage Signs and also 4.3 Foxfire Property Management. And, there's one more in here. And I'll be recusing myself from that. So, is Mr. Dupree here, or anybody representing Mr. Dupree? So, at most, you'll have a four-member board for that case. So, you can either be heard tonight with a four-member board, or you'd like to have the case heard next month with a five-member board.
I'll hear it tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
There's a chance it'll be a three-member board, though, right?
I suspect that Laura Specter-Morgan will be here. She's currently at a meeting, and whenever that meeting ends, which is right now, so you will then have a four-member board. So, Laura, I have to recuse myself on three cases.
Okay.
All right. So, we can actually begin now with our first case. So, case 3.1 Advantage Signs on behalf of Stephen Dupree. Would you like to be heard right now?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm going to recuse myself. I'll read this for the record. Advantage Signs on behalf of Stephen Dupree with a license agreement with the City of Concord, request approval for a one-year extension on the variance, ZBA-00093-2023, approval to allow an off-premise sign at Tax Map 583Z Lot 8, unaddressed North State Street in the Institutional I district, ZBA-0326-2025. Want to just come on forward. Mr. Moynihan will be acting. Chernobyl stepped out for the moment.
Good evening. My name's Josh Messenger. I'm with Advantage Signs.
I need to square you in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You guys know who you are, and you swear that you will tell the truth?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And if you haven't already, sign in. I'm not sure what the book has. But, anyway, we've all reviewed the application, but if you'd like to take a few minutes to tell us what it is that you'd like to get done, that would be terrific.
Yeah, this was already approved as a variance, and I'm filing for an extension because it took time to gather funding for the project. And with the winter, we're not going to be able to do the project until the spring. So, it's just, timing didn't work out in our favor on this project. So, it was already approved. This is an extension is what we're asking for.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Any questions to the board? So, if I can check with code enforcement, it's extensions, it's a one-time extension? You would not be able to return for another extension? You'd have to start the process over again? So, you're aware of that?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Yep. Have a good day.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the application?
Oh, no. We haven't granted it yet.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the application? Okay, great. Any comments from code enforcement?
No, this was just a public meeting for you to make a determination of whether or not you're going to grant the extension. So, you're free to make a motion to grant the extension or not.
Good. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we grant the extension.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. The matter is approved.
Okay. Mr. Waller is returning to the chair.
Yeah, I think I'm done.
No, you had a few more.
You have two more.
It's a four-minute hearing.
Yeah. I like the pace you set.
Okay, we have, the next two cases are for the same applicant, so I'm going to read them both into the record. This is continued from September 3, 2025, by the applicant Walter Dratner, requests approval for a variance from Section 2841D1, minimum frontyard requirements, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to permit zero setback where 10-foot setback is otherwise required along the front property lines, Village Street and Lilac Street for an addition of decks on an existing building. And, request permit lot area of 6534 square feet where 11,500 square feet is otherwise required for the conversion of an existing non-residential building to a two-unit building at Tax Map Lot 1431P58, addressed at 181 Village Street in the Downtown Residential RD District, not a development of regional impact, ZBA-0297-2025. Mr. Dratner, are you here? Please come forward. Do you swear to tell truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Great. Tell us what you want to do.
Well, we apply now from three apartments to two apartments. The issue was the parking lot, not enough parking. And, what happens is, if it's three, the parking lot has to be big enough to go in and turn around and come out. If it's two-family, you can go in and back out. So...
Wait, you mean according to the rules? You don't have to, you're allowed to back out if it's two?
Yes, if it's two-family.
So, you don't need that variance anymore?
No.
Okay.
So, we converted it from three to two, and basically, I think I'm okay now. So, if anybody has any questions regarding this, I'm willing to answer them.
So, are you, are you adding any square, total square footage, or you're just renovating the existing building to turn it into a two-unit?
We're using the same building, same square footage. The apartment's going to be much bigger, from around 800 square feet to 1100 square feet each, you know, two bathrooms, you know. It's going to be from regular to more or less luxury type of apartments. And also, they will have a storage area underneath the building.
So, the setback via, the setback into the 10-foot setback and the size of the building are both the same as they were when it was used for the furniture storage?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, the footprint is the same as when it was a storage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, everything is the same. The only difference is now the people are going to have storage underneath, you know, on the basement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does anyone who wants to be heard in favor of the application? Anyone who would speak in opposition to the applicant? Please step forward. Do you swear to tell truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record, please.
Chris Stevens, 1 St. Catherine Street, adjacent to the property we're speaking of.
Great. What would you like us to know?
I would just, I'm a little confused with the whole parking thing at this point. All of a sudden, we don't need to have parking? So, I'm just kind of curious where we're going to have parking, where we, originally, we needed six spaces. Now, we only need one space per unit. And I still don't see where that parking is going to become available on that particular property. So, I want to clarify that we're not saying, okay, we don't have six parking spots, so we're just going to park in the street, because that was my original concern this whole time.
We're not being asked to grant a variance for parking, so staff can clarify for you?
I can clarify this. So, the law changed so that there's only one parking space per unit now required. So, where it was a three-family, he was going to need a lot more parking. Now, he's condensing it to two families, and now each unit needs one parking space. Mr. Dratner did submit revised plans if you go to the second sheet, Stephanie. So, back here, he's proposing to have the parking lot off of Lilac Street, and there'll be two spaces off of Lilac in that parking area, creating a driveway there.
Wait, I'm sorry. Lilac is, when you say off of Lilac, that's part, that's the subject property or a different lie?
It says West Main, because this is a, this is a, under plan from 1998, but he used this because it's the same lot shape. So, the parking would be on this side, not off of Village Street.
But it, but it's, the subject property is where the parking is?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Yep. There will be no on-street parking.
And is that the new state law? Because previously, it would have been two, a total of four, right?
Two parking spaces, yes. So, now it's...
He only needs one by law, right?
Yeah. He only needs two.
Total.
Total. Yep.
Okay. That addresses my concerns.
Follow on, maybe it will help. So, as I recall, when this case was before us, before, there was a, there was a request for a variance to the parking requirements?
Correct.
And so, some of the public testimony we heard was about that. That's not before us tonight, because he's, it's no longer required as a variance.
He's modified, correct. And he's modified his plan to be more accommodating to those initial concerns.
It applies to the parking requirements.
Correct. Yep.
That's my only concern. That's all I had to ask. So, good. Thank you very much. Have a pleasant evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Yeah. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Any comments from code enforcement? Alrighty. Let me start off with Mark.
I do see the hardship the same as it was, I was not at the September meeting, so I didn't see it at that time, but the previous time, this was before us. The state law obviously changed, so he's not required to provide as much parking, and he's not required to come to us for the variance, for the reversing motion. Was that the other part of it, too? So, it's an existing structure. It's making use of a historic structure. So, I see the hardship. I'm inclined to grant the variances.
Laura?
I'm inclined to grant both variances as well. I don't know whether the existing structure is being reused or not, but it certainly is a historic structure on an oddly-shaped and existing lot. There's really no way to build on this lot without needing variances for a lot size and for setbacks. So, there definitely is a hardship arising from the property. It is not going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood, which is largely residential and rental. And again, this is consistent with what has always been there. I don't see how it will diminish surrounding property values and substantial justice. There would be no substantial justice in denying the variance, because again, the property can't be used without either of these variances. So, I would be inclined to grant it.
Andrew?
Yeah, I agree. The lot is virtually unusable for any practical purpose if you enforce the setback strictly, or the density strictly. And he's a perfect candidate for the law, which is intended to improve the ability to develop housing. So, I agree.
I have nothing to add.
And I concur with my colleagues. Laura, you pretty much stated all the reasons for approval. Do you want to?
For the reasons I've already stated, I would move to grant both variances.
Sounds good.
And adopt the...
Do we still have to do that?
Yeah, okay. And adopt the applicant's finding as fact as the board's.
Sure.
I guess that was your motion, technically. Second?
Well, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There's none. So, motion carries five, nothing, for both variances.
Yes.
So, now I need to recuse myself for the next two cases. One hand?
I got it off of my tablet. You want to move your computer still?
Okay. Do you want this?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to item 4.3, Foxfire Property Management, request of variance from Section 28-4-1C, minimum lot frontage to permit 50 feet of frontage where 100 feet is otherwise required. The property is located at, on an unaddressed lot on Little Pound Road slash Petticook Street, known as Tax Map Lot 651-Z68. The variance request is located in the single-family residential district, with the remaining portion of the lot located in the open space residential district. This is not a development of regional impact, and is the application before me? Yes. Yeah. Great. I just want to remind you that we are a four-member board right now. You have the right to have a five-member board. If you would like to move forward with four, as you're aware, you wouldn't be able to appeal the decision based upon not having a full board. So, could you all introduce yourself, and then we'll square you in?
I'm Steve Dupree.
John Arnold.
Great. And you all swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Great. We've reviewed the application, but if you want to run us through what you think is important for us to know, that would be terrific.
I will. I didn't bring a poster blow up, but I just want to show you, so people get a feel for this. When you drive along Rumford Street, there's Granite Place. Those of us who've been here a long time know it as Chubb. A few years ago, the South Building was sold to the State of New Hampshire, so the Department of Justice could move, so that the legislature could build their new garage. Prior to that, the North Building, the State Administrative Office of the Courts occupied half the building. They have an option to purchase the building. The legislature, as part of its budget, exercised the option. We're in there doing work for them right now, and we anticipate that they will buy it in March. As part of the deal with them, because I was taking something and paying $300,000 off the tax rolls, I insisted that we keep this front land for future development, which has an appraised value of about $2.7 million. I was going to either sell it or donate it to somebody like Catch to turn into tax base. The City of Concord Administration Manager and Deputy City Manager approached me and asked if instead I would donate it to Concord, to let them guide the development, which I've agreed to do on the condition that it provide tax base in the future. In order to get the density here to make the value, you have to count in any developable land on this whole large piece. So, we've come together, we've got this kind of crazy plan that takes this land, connects it to this back land, and over on that side as well, to get the density. Our ultimate plan is to take all but this lot that we're talking about, this variance, and put a, either donate that or put a covenant on it, restricting it to recreational use only, either for the City of Concord, if the city wants the park, or Five Rivers Conservation Trust. For those of you who haven't been out there, this has got about, I would say, 12 miles of bike trails on it, substantially, and hiking trails, substantially larger than Swol Park right now. It'll be a wonderful addition to the city. They will have access down off Petticook Street. We're keeping an access here as well. But, this is the backland. This is what we're referring to right now specifically. There was a 50-foot frontage created here long before there were houses here, and I actually think the 50 feet of frontage existed before the current regulations requiring 100, 200 feet. The goal is to take a 10-and-a-half-acre lot here, create a single-family lot. There's a small, single-family lot here. So, the variance we're requesting is to use 50 feet instead of the required frontage. Here's the downside. If we don't get that variance, I can still access this land by coming up through here. If I come up through there and build a road at that expense, number one, it will adversely affect all the neighbors, because trees will come down. Right now, they look out on forest, other than where I cleared my lot. And number two, if I have to put in a road that long, I'm not going to be able to donate the land. I'll have it zoned for cluster development. It would be developed. None of the neighbors want to see development out there. I don't want to see development out there. So, just carving out this one 10-and-a-half-acre lot, we have a lot, small lot down here, and then putting the easement on it will preserve this land without being disturbed. Again, I could create the frontage requirement, but if I do so, it will, it'll require me to put a road all the way in. If I have to go to the expense level...
Can we put that note back up that you were just looking at?
Ah, big go.
Okay, thanks.
All right. We are keeping a lot, but I'm also keeping an access point here that exists in case the city decides that they want to use that at some point to build a driveway and a parking lot in for the park, and accessing the trails out here rather than coming through here, which I think the city intends to sell to create tax base. If I don't get the variance, though, I have to bring a driveway in here, or here. And if I come in here, goes right behind all these houses, cuts down all those trees. That's just what you have to do to build a road, which nobody in the neighborhood wants. I don't want to do, and probably would not be the use of this as a recreational site. John can go through the different legal requirements, but that's what we're trying to accomplish. Save the land, do the minimum amount of disturbance, create tax base, and create a new park.
So, I guess just to, just to touch on the project generally, to put it in perspective, it's about 150 acres that would get donated to the city, and about 130 or 135 that would be preserved in an easement, recreational use for public or the city, for Steve's comments. I just want to, I guess I want to address first a comment in the staff memo. So, our variance request is framed as asking for 50 feet of frontage where 100 feet is required. That requirement comes from the RS zoning district. The staff memo points out that the lot that we're creating, this 10-and-a-half-acre lot, is bisected by the zoning district boundary. You can see it in the dashed line going through the property right there. And the left and top side of the property is in the RO district. In the RO district, there's a 200-foot frontage requirement. And the staff memo notes that if the house is built in the RO portion of the property, they believe the 200-foot requirement applies. We don't know where the house is going to be built yet, and so I just want to clarify. Our request tonight is to allow a lot with 50 feet of frontage, whether the requirement is 100 feet or 200 feet. What we have is 50 on the road right there, and that's what we're asking for.
And which zone is that access point in?
It's in the RS.
Thank you.
But does that give you any concern when the notice says where 100 feet is required?
It doesn't give me a concern with the notice, because I think our request is still for 50 feet. Whether the requirement is 100 or 200, I think everybody's on notice that we're asking for a frontage variance to allow 50 feet.
John, the notice also references, let's look at it again, that it's in the single-family residential district, but I think what you're suggesting is it might be in a different district?
Well, it's partially in the RS, single-family residential. It's partially in the RO, open space residential. So, the application has all the variance criteria in it. Would you like me to give just a brief summary of that, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, on the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance, the variance won't alter the essential character of the locality. The lot that we're creating here is 10-and-a-half acres, which is significantly larger than the other house lots you can see on the map. And the benefit of that is that the house will be set back significantly from the street and the other houses. So visually, there really won't be any change here. There'll be one more driveway coming off the frontage, but driving down the street and looking at the neighborhood, it's not really going to have any, any impact to that character. There won't be any threat to the public safety, health, or welfare, because There won't be any threat to the public safety, health, or welfare, um, because with the frontage with fifty feet there, uh, there's still plenty of room to put in a compliant driveway uh, that will be wide enough to serve emergency access vehicles and provide safe access to the lot. The um, planning board, I would note, has granted conditional use permit for the location of the driveway um, on that frontage already. On substantial justice, uh, the balancing test, will the variance harm the public more than it'll benefit the applicant? I don't think there's really any public harm here. I think that, based on Steve's description of this uh, project, there's a substantial public benefit. The variance is part of a uh, much larger project that results in a hundred and fifty-five acres being donated to the city and a hundred and thirty-something being preserved as recreational area for uh, public use. On property values, um, there won't be any negative impact there. Um, with ten-and-a-half acres for the house lot, um, as I mentioned, the house will be well separated from the other houses. It'll be well buffered from the other houses. There'll really be more separation and buffering uh, between the proposed house and the existing houses than between the existing houses today, which are all lined up along the street. And also related to the preservation of that recreational land um, in this area, I think that's likely to enhance surrounding property values. On the hardship, um, the property is unique for a couple of reasons. One, it's really a massive property. I mean, the property overall, the lot, the existing lot today is a hundred and seven acres. And when it's combined with the other land that Steve was talking about being part of this project, those properties will be merged. It's over a hundred and fifty acres, and that's just not like any other properties in this vicinity. The second thing is that the property has a really unusual configuration. The existing lot today, um, if you, yeah, thank you, scroll down just a touch. You can see it has three separate frontages, um, but they're all non-contiguous. And that's what, that's what's creating the issue here because when you add up those frontages, there's uh, just shy of two hundred and fifty feet of frontage, but it's in three segments. And so, under the zoning ordinance, they all, all need to be contiguous to, you know, count towards the frontage requirement. And that's where we have the issue. If they were contiguous, there'd be enough frontage for um, you know, two lots up there. The general public purpose of the frontage requirement is twofold. Uh, one, to ensure safe and adequate access, uh, and two, to prevent overcrowding of the streetscape and maintain that separation between development along the street. But here, because the property is so large at the ten-and-a-half acres, as I mentioned, with the house being set way back, it's not going to have any impact on the streetscape, so there won't be any overcrowding in that sense. And with the um, the provision of a fifty-foot access, fifty feet worth of frontage, uh, and that driveway coming through there, uh, that's more than enough with, in order to provide a safe and adequate access for emergency vehicles. So, I think that in this case, due to the conditions of the property, both of those public purposes are served, and um, the proposed use is reasonable. It's a single-family home on a ten-and-a-half acre lot in a residential neighborhood. You know, as Steve mentioned, at a hundred-plus acres, the property could develop for, be developed for a much more intensive use. And um, you know, when you view the variance request in relation to that, um, the impact on the neighborhood or the butters or the city on granting this variance is going to be much lesser than a more intensive development um, out there on that property. So, I think the proposal of creating an oversized house lot and donating a hundred and fifty-plus acres to the city is um, really a good thing, and the variance makes sense.
Okay. Uh, any questions on the board?
There is, in the materials, it said something about two house lots.
There's the other one.
Yeah, the down, yeah, bingo. Thank you.
Oh, but that one didn't need the frontage, right?
Oh, so it's just a, an aside, but that's not the.
Yeah, we're just trying to show it to you. Yeah, got it.
Laura, any questions? Laura?
I'm good.
Just, the, the, the lot is owned by Foxfire today?
Uh, Foxfire manages it for Two Granite Place. It's owned by Two Granite Place. Uh, is it two or one?
It's Two Granite Place.
Two Granite Place LLC. Foxfire is the designated agent, just 'cause I get all my mail there.
All right. And that's in the packet? That document that says that Foxfire is here on behalf of?
Yes. I own Foxfire, and I own Two Granite Place, so I'll give myself permission.
Oh, yeah, I see it here.
It's in there.
Okay. I don't know what that signature is.
Great, thank you. Um, stick around with, uh, great, okay. Uh, is there anybody here that would, just to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. Either on the way up or on the way down, make sure you sign, uh, sign in.
I did before I got here.
Great, thank you. Can you tell, tell us who you are?
My name is Martin Peroso.
And where are you from?
I am, uh, I own property, the budding this, seventy-two Pennacook Street.
Great. Can you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. What do you want us to know?
This is a long history because I was born and raised there, and my parents bought, uh, could you put up the other map? Whoever it is, that I can show where mine is in relation to this. I've never met Steve Dupree before, but I have a lot of good things to say because I've heard so much about what he's done. And he's written to me a couple of times because I'm a butter.
Okay.
Uh, so seventy-two Pennacook, don't go too close. Seventy-two Pennacook Street is right here. And uh, originally, my father bought the land that goes up here and down here. Two way, uh, it goes over here and down here. This was about thirty-three acres. And then uh, back in the eighties, he sold off land to Chubb Life along the proposed road that was here. So, I, and this was the, uh, five of my father's brothers, sister, who needed a piece of land. And so, he gave them all the piece of land. They built right across the reservoir. So, uh, and they've all moved out since then. I purchased the land, this property, from my estate of my parents, and I still own this little piece here, a lead joint here. And I've probably shot twenty-five rabbits here when I was a kid. It's a really nice forest, and there's a lot of wetlands in here too. It's pretty swampy in here. But I did have a question that maybe you can answer. Um, I do understand it's fifty feet where you need a hundred, and on the map that I got, it has several lots that are shown as other subdivided lots, I guess. So, we have lot one, two, three, four, which is not depicted anywhere that I've seen.
It's not really part of the, what you guys are reviewing.
I think that, and I need somebody to tell me. Is it the ten-acre one, if I get permission to put a driveway in here, it's ten acres? If you say no, under fifty feet of frontage, and we add this on, it does lot two become part of lot one? And then if he needs even more, does lot three become part of one, two, and three?
Okay.
To finally meet all of the frontage needed? Um, that I don't know. It would be a shame to have, if that is the case, and you have to have all three, why does the driveway have to be here in order to go all the way over there?
Can I speak to this?
Yeah, I was gonna, if you're okay, I'm gonna let you.
The case that we have before us is just for the fifty feet of frontage, the ten-acre lot, which would be there.
Okay.
Um, there is another subdivision coming forward that they have presented to, sent to the planning board. A butter notice has just went out, but tonight we're looking at the fifty feet of frontage because the way that our zoning ordinance is written, um, frontage needs to be contiguous. So, when they subdivide that other piece off, the, the frontage won't be contiguous anymore. So, that's why we are request, they're requesting the variance for the fifty feet for the ten-acre lot there.
Okay, thank you. That, that explains.
But even though it's not part of the case tonight, was, when, when Steve was giving us the overview, was part of his rationale for why this is, should be granted because of that other development, right?
That's the future of what he would like to do.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. But you're focusing on the fifty feet of frontage for the ten-acre lot.
Right.
This is the only thing we're talking about today.
Correct, yes. That is correct.
And if this is denied, a new proposal will come up to this board?
I cannot speak for the applicant.
It'll be up to him.
Right, oh. So, my understanding is if this is not approved, there could be any changes, including a driveway coming in from the opposite way or starting to add additional things on.
On this map, can you show me again where your home is?
Uh, Pennacook Street zigzagged across here, and I'm right in here. I own all of this.
So, do you have the sledding hill?
Go ahead, Mike.
The sledding hill?
It's a little farther down.
It is, okay.
Oh, yes. Back when it was a gravel pit.
Yeah.
And, and I snowmobiled all over this stuff and walked and hiked, and in fact, I'll give you a, I've got fifteen minutes to say.
Yeah, no, wait.
Two seconds here. There's uh, right down in here, there's a uh, where my dad had built a log cabin in the nineteen thirties from the logs that had come down from the chestnut trees, and there was still a chimney on that property over there.
We're making good TV tonight. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I think that's all I have. I, I think it's a great thing, and I think that the first proposal, to me, makes the best sense for all of us to be able to have all of that undeveloped. The other concern I, that most of Concord and all of New Hampshire has is, boy, if that was developed, we'd have a lot more housing for all the people that need housing. But we don't want to develop everything we own. The front part down towards Rumford Street is a great place to do that. It's led there anymore, but uh, it's a great place to have that kind of thing, and this looks like it's in line with what everyone wants.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anybody here who, oh, she's opposed, or someone has something to offer that might not be for or against his end?
Right.
Okay.
Does it have to be? I have quite.
You can reserve, yes, I'm happy to let you speak.
And you're here, so I'm like, oh, good. I never knew what you looked like.
Great, can you tell us? Can you tell us your name and where you're from?
Yes, my name is Maureen Anderson. Um, I can't do two things at once. And I live at one-twenty-six Pennacook Street and.
Okay, can I just ask you to, I just need to swear you in, and so, thank you. Uh, can you, how was that, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I mainly had questions. Um, I too got this map, this thing, as he got. And the question was, he has it done out in six sections here, and what parts are going to go where? And how was that determined? And I know he wants to live in this little part here because we got two letters now from Mr. Dupree. He wants to live here provided he can build the house and make it work. But in all this subdivision, how much guarantee is there that it's going to stay undeveloped? Or will it get sold to somebody who can then, hey, I want to build a hotel, or I want to build something more? I know, I, well, that, we're thinking of the hotel mogul, sorry. Um, we're thinking a lot about how much you own in the town.
Excuse me, excuse me, just be better if, for the record, if you address it to us, and then the applicant have the opportunity to answer questions if he chooses.
We know that Mr. Dupree develops a lot in Concord, and we do not want this developed. It's right behind our houses. We bought it for a reason. When Chubb Life originally bought the land, they bought it hoping that it would stay hiking lands and so on. That happened back in, I don't know, way back when they bought it the first time. Um, and it has been rumored throughout, and then it went through Lincoln Financial, through a few companies. And now, here we are, and we don't want to see it developed. But what guarantees are there that those parts aren't going to be developed? I live along the third section that he has here.
For the record, we don't have that as part of our, do we?
Right, so, so.
So, this is, we're kind of getting into a territory that is, is not what's in front of you tonight. Um, so, while I appreciate getting the overall view of what's going on, that what's being discussed tonight and decided upon tonight is the frontage issue. So, when this, when this project moves farther along.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but I do think we'll give the applicant the opportunity to answer the question. I do think it is part of the presentation that it would, that this, this frontage request is based upon the value of the, the rest of the projects.
Right, we're talking about the sub, future subdivision.
So, I'll get to, I'll get to quote enforcement when she's done speaking, so if you could continue.
Um, but the main part is those other two access points that were on Pennacook Street. If driveways were made, could they be made into roads, which could then be reached and developed beyond that? Um, that, there's just questions on how much can be developed behind there based on driveway frontage? And if you allow one driveway frontage with a variance, it sets a precedence. Am I for or against it? I don't know. I would hope that it's going to be only the one house, and maybe the variance can be there. But if he can't get that variance, he's going to extend and extend, and how much can be made through? Can you turn a driveway into a road, starting residential and going into the other part, the RO? There's RS and RO, so can it, can it be done that way? Uh, those are just questions, like, I don't know. I don't know the zoning. I don't know all the laws. I haven't found a whole lot on the webs. I keep looking, and you can't find a whole lot just in Concord and what's, and what's relevant and current, so. It was just questions that I had. It wasn't for or against, it's questions.
Okay, great. While you're here, the questions of the board.
I think there are more questions that maybe you can answer.
Thank you. Okay, uh, is there anybody else here who wishes to speak for, against, or is unsure yet, but still would like to speak? Okay, great. So, now if the city staff has anything to, to offer, please do.
Yes. Um, regarding the minimum frontage and addressing Mr. Arnold's comment about requesting that the board grant the variance for frontage for the lot in general, not distincting the zone where a hundred feet or two hundred feet. Our zoning ordinance says that no, um, no buildings or structure, and this is for minimum uh, frontage, no buildings or structures shall be constructed and no use shall be established on a lot having less frontage than the minimum dimension indicated in section twenty-eight four dash one. So, that is why if he does build in the RO zone, that's why that comment was there because our zoning ordinance specifically calls out that he has to have the minimum frontage in that zone. So, even though his driveway would start in the RS, he's building on a lot in the RO zone. So, that's where that comment came from, just to give you a little background history regarding that.
But do you, you agree with what Mr. Arnold said, that the amount of frontage they need will depend on which zone they actually build in?
Correct.
And, and do you agree with what he said, that, that it, if we grant it for fifty, it doesn't matter what the, what the hearing notice said?
You're asking for less right now. What the notice says right now is less than what the request would be. The RO zone requests two hundred feet. The RS zone requires a hundred feet. So, strictest would apply. So, if he was asking for the RO zone, I think we would be having a different conversation because he would be having less. But where he's requesting more, that's where the difference is.
Oh, oh, more of a.
Correct, because you need two hundred feet in the RO zone in order to build on a lot in that zone. So, that is where that comment, you know, came from. Stephanie, I don't know if you have anything more to add regarding?
Uh, no, just for the, to focus on the application that was noted in front of them and understanding that it is an overall picture, but to, to keep your decision-making based on the, the frontage requirements, and that's not a future subdivision of the property.
Uh, so the applicant have anything that they would like to address that came up in just one?
Yes, at this point, no decision's been made which of the two zones the house would be located in. So, it might be that it is in the zone that requires a hundred feet. Part of the house might be sitting in the zone that's a two hundred feet. Whether it's two hundred feet required or a hundred feet required, we're still asking for variance to have only fifty feet. I know we're staying on topic. The only point I would make is that we, the donation to the city has a restrictive covenant that no further use, no further development ever occur on the property. That's a condition of my gift to the city.
Okay. Any questions on the board? Okay, thank you.
Can I make a comment regarding the house?
Yes, please.
Even though they don't have, um, building permits yet, there is um, a sectionary zoning ordinance that allows you, if you do have split zoning, um, you can get up to, I believe it's, you can choose forty linear feet, which is not very much, to be able to choose what zone you're going to, so just keep that in mind as well. And did the application say RS or RO? Um, let me pull it up, I believe it says RS. Because I think it says RO.
Says RO, yeah.
The application says RO?
Well, it says it on the, uh, yeah.
It says RS.
The application says it's in both, with most of the property in the RO, but a portion of it in the RS.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Why don't we take the temperature of the board, uh, start with Laura.
I think it's grantable. Um, as John noted, the purpose of frontage requirements are basically to ensure that they're safe and same access and to control density. I think whether you have fifty feet here or a hundred feet or two hundred feet, you have adequate access, and it's a ten-acre lot.
and it's a 10-acre lot, so the density is not a problem. It is a weird lot, and there is this 50-foot access strip. It makes more sense to utilize that strip than to build a road from any of the other access points, both environmentally and financially, and from good planning. Building a house, there's a reasonable use. You know, there's no good reason to apply the zoning ordinance to this particular piece of property. It's not going to diminish surrounding property values, and I don't see the justice in applying this 200 feet strictly here, so I would be inclined to grant the variance.
I'm also inclined to grant it. I'm, I'll add the, it is an oddly shaped lot, and if the applicant were made to do the driveway to one of the other two potential frontages, that would make it even more oddly-shaped lot, and it meets the neighborhood character of the single-family homes.
One thing that's interesting is a lot, a lot of times we hear arguments along the lines of, well, everyone else in this neighborhood is already sort of in a setback, or, you know, is somehow already not in compliance, so that, you know, is an argument why we don't have to be too. Here, it's, it's the opposite. All, every other house on that road is in compliance with the frontage, and in my mind, that means that if they are out of compliance, it's not going to be noticeable. You know, it would be different if they were the first house on the street and wanted 50, and they were like, well, wait a minute, now, if everyone else goes for 50, that's really going to change the character, because, you know, but here, because the houses are probably far enough apart, if someone's driving by, they're not going to know if one specific lot has 50, when all the others have 100 or more. So, so in my mind, you know, and also, as the others have said, you know, due to the very unusual nature of the lot, and to have to use the frontage farther down, I think it was explained, would, would be sort of an unnatural way, and an inefficient way to develop it, and I think that would be a hardship. And I'd also say, in my mind, I'm not, I guess I appreciate a little bit what Mr. Dupree was explaining about the whole big picture of the project, but I'm not really even factoring that in. Whatever else they can do with it or can't do with it is going to be for a different forum.
Yeah, the donation doesn't really weigh in.
Yeah. It was interesting background, but it's not a factor for me.
Can I also add, I feel like we, we've had a couple RO cases like this, where there's like a weird tooth sticking out to get a weird frontage situation, like this is ringing a bell for me, anyway.
Yep. Okay, great. Before I close the record, I just, I had a question for Ms. O'Brien. So it looks like there's a cascading set of things that have to happen, and so, the sub, after this project leaves the zoning, assuming with, leaves the zoning board, can you tell me, well, planning?
They have an application before, or coming before the planning board for November.
Okay, and that might be an opportunity for a butters, or people concerned about the guarantees, and if it's in conservation?
A butter notices went out on Monday, so...
Right, so that might be in a more appropriate form to raise some of those questions. Yeah, okay, great, thank you. I would welcome a motion at this point.
I move that we grant the variance from Section 2841C, minimum frontage. Each Table of Dimensional Regulations to permit 50 feet of frontage for the construction of a single-family dwelling at unaddressed Little Pond Road slash Pennycook Street, because all of the criteria under 67433 have been met based on the record before us, and I move to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
Okay, it has been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 It is unanimous, and the application is approved. Okay, moving on to item 4.4. John L. Arnold, on behalf of property owners, the Arts Alley LLC and Foxfire Property Management, request a variance from Article 28-6-9BI to allow three new building signs totaling 122.6 square feet, where a maximum of three building signs in 73 square feet is otherwise allowed. The property is known as Tax Map and Lot 7412-Z-37, located at 20 to 22 South Main Street in the Central Business Performance District. If you could introduce yourselves and tell us where you're from.
Steve Dupree, I'm the developer.
Okay.
I'm still John Arnold.
Great, and you're still, well, just to be safe, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Great. We've all read the application. If you want to walk us through the high points, and tell us what you want to do.
I think some, some of you may have been here when we started this project on the board, we had a few variances. I don't, I'm not sure anybody on the planning staff was, but at the time, we said we couldn't assess what the signage needs would be till we actually saw the thing go up. So we've built the project, I think it's been well-received as, in addition to Concord, the only sign, and we met with the former planning director and staff, and understand the signage requirements within the property that don't, about face out or aren't visible from the street. But when we originally did the project, I brought a few pictures. This is from across the street, right by the Red River Theater sign. When we originally did the project, we have a sign proposed down the alley for the venue. This is 5,000 feet of meeting space. This is a seasonal bar up top. Obviously, this is the Friendly Toast. They got their sign permit. And we have a proposed sign to go in the alley, so that once you go down the alley, you'll know how to get to the venue. It didn't take us very long, though, after we opened, and that's one of the reasons we didn't come in with a signed package originally. We wanted to see how traffic flows. Most of the people who visit this property are doing exactly what we hoped, and that is using the garage, now, because there isn't enough street parking. So they park on the garage, and they come over, and then they go, where's the venue? I have a bar association meeting. Now, we've got a proposed sign we're going to put in the alley, but even with that sign, we'll show you, I'll show you that in a minute, even with that sign in the alley, if you're coming out of the garage and you're standing across from this building, you cannot figure out what the venue is or where the rooftop bar is. So we, we looked at that and said, all right, what we'd like to do is put a sign here that says the venue, you can see it on that, perfect, so that people coming out of the garage know that there is a venue there. They still have to go down the alley to get in, and people are going into the Friendly Toast, asking how do they get to the venue? Hindsight's 100%, maybe should have put the entrance to the Friendly Toast in the sign down there. And then we have the same problem because of the visual height, and it's, and I'll show you from farther back, can't see that that's a bar, so hence, we wanted to put one up on the third floor above the Airstream trailer. Here's farther back, when you come out the garage door, you can see, when you come out the garage door again, you can't see any signage we have down the alley that we've proposed, and it's even harder to read that there's a separate venue there. So what our goal is, is to put a sign here, you see the venue, so that at least when people come out, they are going, where, where is the project? Some people have gone into Bank of New Hampshire stage going, is this the venue? Not an unreasonable question, considering it is a venue, and ditto with that. And then, the other sign, the only other sign we have, and we at least had the forethought, because when we went to ADR, even though it wasn't part of our sign package, we went to ADR for the project, we did show that we wanted, and put amounts for a vertical sign. So once you come into the alley, once you go towards the Bank of New Hampshire stage, you go, great, I've seen a sign for the venue, how do I get in? Once you get past this front door, if we get the variances, you'll have a sign here, a vertical sign. And that's really the total sign for it. Once we get inside, we're, we're going to put a, an art sign down here, but not an advertising sign that has the name of the bar out back. And that's the sign. So that's just the background of what we're asking for, and John will walk through the specific, specific variances. But we very deliberately did not come in with the signs ahead of time, because we just didn't know how traffic would flow, where most of our traffic, over 80% of our traffic, is parking in the garage, which is exactly what we want, because if you've been in that garage after 5 o'clock, the top two levels are completely empty, not like a lot of downtown garages, so we think that's a good thing. John, you can...
So I guess just to hone in on what we're asking for here, there's three new signs that are being proposed. One is a 19.7 square foot wall sign for the main venue facing Main Street, right above the windows on the left side, where the cursor is. Second is a 30-square-foot projecting sign for the main venue in the alley on the north side of the building. And then the third is a 72.9 square foot wall sign for the rooftop, Rooftop Social up on the facade of that rooftop deck. So the Friendly Toast sign is already there, so with the Friendly Toast signs and the proposed signs, there's a total of five building signs on the building. We're proposing three, there are already two existing. With the five building signs in our proposal, there'd be a total of 176 and a half square feet. So in the zoning district, we're allowed to have three building signs, and the maximum sign area is a function of the building frontage. So the building frontage here, meaning the width of the building facing the street is 73 feet long, and under the ordinance, it means we get 73 square feet of signage. So the ask is to allow three new building signs totaling 122 square feet for those three signs. And then, I'll hit on the variance criteria briefly, but the main theme is basically that, you know, the building here is not particularly wide, 73 feet, but it is relatively tall, having three stories and three different users on each one of the three floors, three different businesses. And the, the nature of those businesses, being bars, restaurants, event venues, depend heavily on being easily identifiable, not only to, you know, people walking down the street, looking for a place to eat or grab a drink, or, but also people actively seeking out the location. And I think when you look at the sign drawings, like what's up on the screen right now, I mean, it's obviously subjective, but I think all the signs are relatively modest and tasteful. This isn't excessive signage, in my opinion, and I think it fits in well to what's in that area. So on the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance, I don't think the proposed signs will alter the essential character of the neighborhood. There are a bunch of signs, but they're all spread out over the facade, both in terms of height and, you know, left to right, so it's not like a big cluster of excessive signage. And individually or collectively, I don't think they're either oversized or distracting. In terms of the neighborhoods, Steve pointed out that the building's right next to the Concord Theater, Bank of New Hampshire stage. That has, you know, more prominent and, and larger signage than what we're proposing on this building. So in that sense, I don't think it'll change the character of the neighborhood. The signs won't threaten public safety, health, or welfare. The substantial justice criteria, the balancing test, the signs won't cause any public harm, but they will benefit the applicant. As I mentioned, the buildings here are restaurants and bars, so...
Meeting space.
And meeting space, entertainment venues. So they rely heavily on good visibility for people, as I said, both passing and seeking out the particular venues, so in that sense, adequate signage benefits the public, it also benefits the applicant. On property values, there won't be any negative impact there. The development as a whole has been a big hit, it's been really popular down there, it's made the downtown area a lot more vibrant. The signage really ensures the long-term success of those businesses by making sure they're identifiable, so I think that's a good thing for property values in the area. On ownership, this is kind of what I mentioned to begin with. The property here is unique because the building's relatively narrow and tall compared to the other buildings in the area, and it means that it only gets 73 square feet of building signage, and it has three distinct, separate businesses on three separate floors. And the issue with the buildings on the upper floors is that they're inherently, they inherently face a challenge in being prominent and visible to patrons. So signage up there, and, and large enough signage is important for them. The general purpose of the sign regulations is to provide safe and adequate identification of businesses so that they can succeed, but also preventing the unsightliness and potential, potential hazards of excessive signage. And I think the proposal strikes the balance between those kind of two competing factors. I don't think, as I said, that the signage is overwhelming or too large or distracting. I think it's attractive and tasteful, but big enough for people to be able to easily identify those businesses. So I think that's it, unless you guys have questions.
Okay. I would just have one note. I know we're starting the whole trip through, and you folks will be involved in master planning, but 200 yards from here down in the Store Street Mall, which has been really done, and I know those developers well, that signage, because they have such tremendous frontage, is billboard sign, yet you can park in front, and if it were a small sign, you could see it. Here, if you park in front, you can't see signage, and that really creates a hardship. Tall building, narrow frontage, hard visibility, and three separate businesses, which isn't usual.
Okay, great. Questions, the board, Andrew?
Are there, one, the one I'm kind of thinking about is the, the rooftop one, because that, I know that there've been gradually some additional, so I guess you could say skyline sty, you know, types of signs, but the, are there any other signs on that side of the street that high up?
Yes. Oh, not that side of the street, the other side of the street, obviously, Concord Hotel.
Concord Hotel, that's much higher, right?
Right, and we actually have a permit at 100 North Main Street on the, on the east side of the building, the very height of the building, and we just don't illuminate anymore, there's a big blue non-eagle that was five stories up. And in this one...
But what building is that?
100 North Main.
It used to be the Eagle Hotel across from State House.
Oh, oh, yeah, sure, okay. Where Revelstoke, same building.
So you have a permit of...
Yeah, it's been there for 30 years, yeah.
Right, okay, right.
The, the other thing I just, the challenge is, even with this sign up there, once you get across the street on the west, on the west side of Main Street, you'll be able to see the venue sign, you won't be able to see the Rooftop Social sign. This literally will be visible to people coming out of the garage, or people on the east side of Main Street. Yeah, you literally can't see it. I mean, it's just, it literally is, so when people hopefully use the garage as the primary place to park, they come out, they go, where is the venue? Where's the Rooftop Social?
Did you need any kind of variance from us to, to go that high up there, or is that allowed by right?
Oh, no, we were, our first draft was five stories, you'll remember, we kept chopping it down.
But even now, it's, you need a variance?
Oh, yeah, we're way below, we could...
Oh, below, yeah.
Yeah, we're way below the height.
On the, on the sign height, I would just point out that initially, our application included a request for the height. It's not being heard by the zoning board tonight, because the staff determined that we needed to go to the planning board for a conditional use permit instead. So the request tonight is really just about the number of signs in the area, but the sign height, which I think you were asking about, is a separate, separate issue that's not before you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, you're probably looking at our application, because we had it in our application, but it was removed from the agenda.
Okay. Okay, other questions, the board? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the application? And is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the, to the application? Any comments from staff? Okay, great. I'll start with Andrew on this one.
Thank you. I mean, I'm, these signs, these sign cases are always challenging, because of course it's a unique property, it's, it's a well-developed property, and I mean, you could say they created the hardship, so to speak, because they, they built it, but I think, you know, it's generally considered very welcome, positive development to a building that otherwise may not have gotten, you know, this type of use, so, I mean, I'm inclined to grant it, although I do, I always get concerned with these sign cases, that, you know, it's, it's a slippery slope, or the exception kind of swallows the rule, but I, but I think it would be unfair to kind of deny them when we've granted, you know, similar, similar sign variances for other buildings in this area.
Okay, Mark?
I'm inclined to grant it, because even just from the photo that was provided in our packet, I felt like the venue alone was kind of hard to read, so I'm kind of sold. I could also see the argument for safety, for now that there is going to be signage on the street, cars might not stop, like, looking around for where they're trying to go, but he's also said that they've been mostly going to the garage, so that's probably a good thing, keeping the traffic flow moving, so I'm in, I'm in support of it.
Laura, any observations, sir?
I don't find these cases hard at all, because our sign ordinance is stupid, so I'm all in favor of granting it.
But that's why I find, that's why I find them hard.
Okay, great. I will not ask you to make the motion, then.
I, I'll, I'll move to approve, because I think that it's a, it's a unique building, it's a, it's a, it's a unique design.
um, it's a, it's a, it's a unique design, and it's not primar-, the, the variance request is not primarily designed to sort of gain additional advertising, you know, at expense to the neighbors, it's primarily designed for wayfinding and overall attractiveness of, of, of the development. So I, I would, um, move to grant the variance as to the square footage allowed, and just pull up the language here. Um, so I moved to grant the variance from Article twenty-eight six, Section twenty-eight six nine B one A and B to allow a hundred nine, nine, one hundred eighty-nine point seven square feet storefront wall sign, where a hundred thirty-seven square feet is allowed, and a side elevation sign of a hundred twenty, oh wait, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. I apologize, there's multiple sign variances. Um, there we go. Uh, strike that last, so I moved to grant the variance from twenty-eight six nine one B one to, to allow three new building signs totaling one twenty-two point six square feet, where a maximum of three building signs and seventy-three square feet is otherwise allowed at twenty and twenty-two South Main Street, because all the criteria under RSA six seventy-four thirty-three have been met, based on the record before us, and to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The item is approved. Thank you. I'm going to return the gavel to Mr. Wallner.
He almost got lucky, I almost granted your motion by accident.
This is done, this is done.
All righty, our next case is, uh, four point five interchange development LLC request variance from Article twenty-eight dash six, sign, Section twenty-eight six B nine B one A and B, to allow one hundred eighty-nine point seven square foot storefront wall sign where a hundred thirty-seven square foot is allowed, and a side elevation sign of one hundred twenty-nine point nine square feet, for a total of three hundred and nineteen point two square feet of signage where a hundred thirty-seven square feet is allowed. The property is known as Tax Map and Lot zero six P five slash six, located at fourteen Merchant's Way in Gateway Performance GWP District, not a development of regional impact, ZBA oh three two nine two oh two five. This way, sorry.
Do you want to introduce ourselves first?
Do we sell, no, I swear you went first. Do we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes.
Now, tell us who you are.
For the record, my name is Heather Dudko, twenty-seven Old Meeting House Road in Auburn, Mass, and I'm representing American Sign, who's the sign installer for Marshalls.
My name is Laurie Rocio, and I'm here on behalf of Interchange Development LLC, the landlord.
Hey, so tell us what you want to do.
Okay, so, uh, Marshalls is, will be a new tenant in the plaza on Merchant's Way. Um, I am told that the building has not been built yet, so we are, um, far ahead of the project, um, and they are proposing a front wall sign and a sidewall sign. Based on the tenant frontage of one thirty-seven feet, the total square footage for signage would be one, one thirty-seven. Um, based on the building height and the width of the side elevation, Marshalls is proposing, um, they feel appropriate sized signage, um, for visibility, and on the front, it would be a six-foot letter, thirty-one foot, one inch wide, totaling one eighty-nine point seven square foot. That would be over the front entrance. The side sign proposed at five foot by twenty-five foot, eleven inch at one twenty-nine point five. That is positioned on the elevation, um, to be viewed for customers, um, by Market Basket and Home Goods. So there's no entrance on that side, but that was, that's proposed for visibility for the customers on the, that end of the plaza. It's, um, their typical branding, the blue letters, um, you see Marshalls everywhere, um, they have the, the typical branding, um, and they do a study based on the height and visibility and traffic, um, to, to appropriately propose, um, the signage there. Do you need me to go through the criteria?
Yeah, just touch on it, please.
Okay, sure. I'm just going to go for my application, if that's okay. Um, granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest, because the signage has no visibility from a residential area and no adverse effects on public interest. This is a retail plaza, um, there's multiple buildings, multiple signs, um, and it would be consistent with what is in the plaza there now. And it would serve the public interest to those customers who need to identify this new tenant in the plaza. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed, because this is similar signage and in keeping with the area in the retail area, and the ordinance does allow for building signage. Uh, we also had proposed an under canopy sign, but that was asked, the, um, architectural review asked us to remove that, and we did, um, because they felt that, um, that would be more appropriate if there was, um, more like a strip mall. So that, we just have the two wall signs proposed. Granting the variance would do substantial, substantial justice, because the tenant is considered an anchor tenant, and the signage is similar to the other anchor tenants. And as I said, they do feel that this sized signage is visually appropriate on the size building. Um, the values of surrounding properties would not be diminished, it's a commercial shopping plaza, um, and there'd be no diminishment to any of the retail stores there or any of the surrounding properties, and it's consistent with what's in the plaza now. And they just, they feel the hardship, um, to conform to a one hundred and thirty-seven square foot sign, if they were to install something of that size, it would be, I'm sorry, the letter height.
While she's looking for that, Laurie, where is this building going? Oh, it's, um, gonna go between, you know where the Service Credit Union is? Yeah. Okay. And right now, we're building Aviva Tartaria across from that? Yep. It's, it's, it's the middle of that U-shaped parking lot. All right, thanks.
They need to reduce the sign to a four-foot letter height, um, to accommodate the code, and they feel that that's not appro-, inappropriate visually on the building.
And these are six feet?
Correct. On the front, six, and on the side, it's five.
So it's, I, I'm not too familiar with, I haven't been up there much, wait, can you, yeah, is it in the same, a separate set of buildings than the, than where the Market Basket is?
Andrew, look up. Oh, that's, that's-
Here's, here's Market Basket, right?
That's Market Basket, okay.
Correct, okay. Uh, I know where the liquor store is. So we're down in here.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is a pretty old, um, comprehensive development plan that, because it was, at the time, that Market Basket was being built, that was the current proposal, it's since changed quite a bit. So where that proposed retail is that you just circled, that is where it is, it's just not that shape.
And right now, that's just empty parking lot?
That's right. It's, it's a, it's a lot, it's getting ready for the building.
Is that, is any other store going to share that, or space, or it's going to be entirely-
Yes, yes. It's been through planning board already, it's been through pl- planning board a number of times, it's, um, I wish we had the site plan here, but, um, so Marshalls is the majority of the building, it's twenty-three thousand square feet of a thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand square foot building, with the front door facing north, and the east wall facing, um, Market Basket and Home Goods is the long wall where they want the second sign. The west wall of the building will face essentially the new hospital building, which, if you haven't been up there, there's a new hospital building, uh, Concord Hospital Walk-In Care, and that will have multiple tenants on, facing west. So we may or may not have any other tenants on the north wall, that is yet to be determined. If anything, we'd have a small tenant.
But what, they'll need a sign, right?
Yes, but they would have their own frontage, so their sign is based on only their frontage, not the frontage of the building. So each tenant gets a sign based on their frontage.
And the frontage is calculated based on that, that road is considered?
Yeah, the road in which you get the access to, which this one would be Merchant's Way, which is the road to the north.
Oh, the circular, the kind of rounding?
The main road that leads right to Market Basket, that's Merchant's Way.
Okay.
So their entrance, Marshalls entrance is on Merchant's Way, the front entrance.
Thank you. Anything else regarding the criteria that we should know?
Um, no.
In terms of hardship, yeah.
Does Home Goods have a side sign or just a front sign? They don't. They don't have a side sign, because it faces what I'll call the back industrial lot, there's, there is nothing in that area. Yeah, okay. So in this case, the side sign for Marshalls would face a pretty large parking lot where you could share, you could park in the middle of the lot in front of Market Basket and Home Goods, and then walk over to Marshalls, because you'd say, oh, look, there's Marshalls. And then on the north side, you would be seeing the sign from all of Merchant's Way, as well as all of Route Four, so it's a, it, it is the main attention-grabber sign. Yeah.
But it seems like, you know, based on the frontage on Merchant's Way, almost every, we must have granted variances for Market Basket and Home Goods, right?
Yes, you did.
So almost every, every div-, store built here is going to need a variance, right?
No, not necessarily. Some have, some have asked for variance for additional signage, because some of the buildings are facing two different directions, so they've put sign on the backside of a building, which is, becomes the front side, depending on which way you come into the building. Um, but, but yeah, Home Goods and Market Basket, they generally look for larger signage to kind of match the size of the building. Those are actually in the packet, yeah.
Oh, yeah, them, yeah, thanks. Any other questions? Jim? Laura? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this application? Or is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Code have any comments?
Uh, I would just like to previously note that in the staff report, I had, um, wrote that case number sixty-three twenty-one to allow four hundred and eighty-two point four-two square feet for a sign at Market Basket, um, where two hundred square feet, so we have, you, the board has approved previous signs for that, that area for Market Basket, and then for Home Goods, it was a square footage of two fifty-six seventy-five.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, I think we clear the hearing closed, and start off with Jim.
Uh, yeah, thank you. I'm inclined to support this, I think, uh, there's a lot going on in this campus, retail campus here, and so proper signage will get customers where they're going and not wandering around parking lots and rotaries and stuff, so, um, I think the, the wisdom of the sign would give us the flexibility for this type of-
Laura?
It's a really busy site, it needs good signage, I'm in favor of the-
Good, Andrew?
I mean, I, I have the same, you know, very similar comment as the last, as the last meeting, but I'll, instead of repeating my pontificating, I'll disagree with what Laurie said earlier, that, you know, it, obviously the ordinance doesn't really match anything they're doing here, and they've created essentially this entire development that really is not affecting anything else remotely, so don't see the harm.
Yeah, Mark?
Um, we keep getting these applications for these national chains, just because of the way our sign ordinance is, and so I'm, for that and all the reasons, not, that's not the reason, but for all the reasons before me, um, I'm inclined to support it.
I am too. I mean, this campus is going to continue to enlarge, and I think, um, s- identifications could be a key issue for the folks who go to visit that, so anything we can do to ease that process, I'm inclined to support. So at this point, we'd like to make a motion.
I move to grant the variance for Article twenty-eight six signs, Section twenty-eight six nine B one A and B, to allow a hundred and eighty-nine point seven square feet storefront wall sign, where a hundred and thirty-seven square feet is allowed, and a side elevation sign of a hundred and twenty-nine point nine square feet, for a total of three hundred and nine point two square feet of signage, where a hundred and thirty-seven square feet is allowed at fourteen Merchant's Way, because all of the criteria under six seventy-four thirty-three have been met, based on the record before us, and to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
Thank you.
I'll second.
They've seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Five to nothing. Good luck with that. All right. Our next case tonight is Juliana Sheldon and Michael Bouchard, on behalf of property owners Jennifer and Charles Baker, requesting variance from Article twenty-eight dash four Development Design Standards, Section twenty-eight four one D three, minimum side yard requirements H slash H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, permit the construction of a detached garage with a four-foot setback where fifteen feet is required. The property is known as Tax Map and Lot one four two one slash P twenty-eight, located at two Auburn Street, excuse me, in the residential single-family RS District, not a development of regional impact, ZBA oh three three two two oh two five. Let's do this. Do we swear, do we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Great. State your name for the record, please.
My name's Juliana Sheldon.
Do we have that letter? I didn't see it in our packet, from the butter?
From the neighbor? Oh, here it is. I am the owner of the property at eight, six?
Six.
Auburn Street, which of us? Yep, it's in the packet.
Thank you.
There's only impact of the stone wall if it's in the historic district, is that right? Really, I'm not, I don't know if that, I don't think that there's scope anyway, but-
Stone walls can only not be touched if they're boundaries.
Got it, okay. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the application? Or is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Comments from Code?
Hi, just that it is a corner lot, so our zoning ordinance says that corner lots otherwise has, have multiple frontages on streets, so they shall be adj-, uh, blah, they shall be observed as frontages and side yards, so there's no rear yard setbacks, so they would have to adhere to the frontage and side yard, and I believe that zone, my computer wants to work with me, I believe it's a twenty-five foot setback.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah, so they would have to meet the twenty-five foot and the fifteen foot, because they don't have a rear yard setback.
Okay, thank you.
And there's also a little sliver of another frontage right here on Vernon Street, which would add, you know, additional hardship to relocate the garage, the proposed garage. which would add, you know, additional hardship to relocate the garage, the proposed garage.
Mark, what do you think?
I see the hardship. With the slant on the Liberty Street, or going down toward the Liberty Street frontage, and the need for a safe place to store vehicles and whatever else they would need, I see the hardship on that front. It is... It'll match... As they pointed out, it matches the detached garages elsewhere in that neighborhood and does not alter the character of the neighborhood.
Jim?
Yeah, I am inclined to support it. I think this is... We generally support them in garages because they add value to the property. And the slope in this property suggests that this is where it belongs.
Yeah, I agree. I think that typically, we think it's a reasonable use to be able to put a garage on a single-family property. And here, you know, it's really the only logical place that someone would put it without having to do extensive construction. So, I think that's reasonable.
I agree.
And I do too. I drive by that place at least two, three times a day. And it's quite a pronounced hill on the Liberty Street. I mean, it would be a real challenge to do anything with that. So, I mean, obviously, inclined to support it. So, at this point...
Three times a day?
Hmm? Yeah, that means it's my main access point.
He's a busy guy, Jim.
I go down Auburn Street all the time.
Oh, yeah. It's a high-traffic, high-traffic street, yeah.
It's like the roundabouts.
Nice.
Going a little roundabout there, trying to make the turn to go up Auburn Street is always good fun. So, who would like to make a motion?
I'll move.
You will? Great.
I move to grant the variance from Section 28-4-1D3, side setback H, Table of Dimensional Regulations to permit a side setback of four feet where 15 feet is the minimum setback allowed for the construction of a detached garage at 2 Auburn Street in the single-family residential district because of all the criteria set forth in RSA 674:33 have been met based on the record before us. And I move to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
I second that.
Great. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries. Five to nothing. Congratulations. Enjoy your garage. All right. Our next applicant... Our next request is in two parts. I'll read them both into the record. Suzanne and Robert Aldrich request a variance from Section 28-41D1, Minimum Front Yard Requirements H, Table of Dimensional Regulations in RSA 674:33V to permit the construction of a porch with a ramp with a five-foot setback where 25-foot setback is required, Tax Map Lot 753Z42 addressed at 14 Marion Street in the single-family residential RS District. Also, the request of variance from Section 28-41D3, Minimum Side Yard Requirements H, Table of Dimensional Regulations in RSA 674:33V to construct a porch with a ramp with a 10-foot setback where 15-foot is required at Tax Map Lot 753Z42 addressed at 14 Marion Street in the single-family residential RS District, not a development of regional impact, ZBA 03432025 and ZBA 03332025. Good evening. Do we swear to tell truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth? Great.
Yes.
For the record, please tell us who you are.
I'm Susan.
Robin Aldrich.
Suzie Aldrich.
Great. So, tell us what you'd like to do.
Well, we want to add a front porch, a small front porch. Because we used to own six acres up in Pittsburgh, New Hampshire. We lived up there for like 15 years. And we had a hobby farm. And so, we... And we had an eight-foot porch up there. And he used to sit on the porch a lot because that's all he... He's a Vietnam veteran and he's got a lot of disabilities. So, the porch adds a nice touch too for him to be up on the porch to, you know, enjoy the weather. And also, yeah. And also, it'll be easy access. Once we have the porch up, it'll be easier access for him to go to the driveway to get in the car, you know what I mean? So...
So, where's the porch going to be in relationship to that picture right there?
Like, see where all the rocks are in the front?
Okay.
Okay, from the... From the... It's going to be 32 feet long and six feet out only.
And is it going to wrap around the house?
No.
No?
No, it's just going to be in the front.
Okay.
Do you think the porch would give you more room to make the ramp easier to get in and out of the door?
Yes, very much so.
We don't have a diagram, but you're trying to do, do we?
Sort of.
Sort of. Okay.
Do you have a contractor or...?
Yeah.
Yep. Plus, it's going to be easier access for him because if you look at the front of the house, there's a... The big picture window is where he sits. And that's where he'll be coming out of. So, it's much easier for him to... Because sometimes I got to use the wheelchair for him. And so...
Oh, so you're going to put in a door there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, it'll...
That's important to understand. Okay.
Yes. Yeah. See where the picture window is? That's his... That's where he actually sits there.
Okay. Now, I understand.
So, it's going to... Is it going to be a covered porch? It's going to be enclosed or...?
Yeah, it's going to be a covered porch. I mean, a roof on top.
Not fully enclosed, but...
No, not fully enclosed, no.
But the... It would lead into your front door?
Yeah.
And then you'd put the ramp?
Correct. Yeah. Like, see where the white post is right there at the corner? It would go in like probably, I think it's a foot, a foot and a half in. And then from there, all the way down to the other side, the same.
This way?
Yeah, correct, that way. And then it wouldn't go like a... So, the porch would stop where the rocks are. It wouldn't go on the grass.
Good.
It's only six feet there.
So, you're... Are you already in your setback with your current house? Or is this... Because the porch... Because you're coming within five feet of the setback. So, are you already within the setback? No?
The house is... Okay. Why did that just... Just to stop it? I had the setbacks in the... Of the...
Yeah, they must be within... No?
Yeah.
What's the other building on the corner?
Because the porch looks like it's only maybe five or 10 feet tops, right? So, if they're coming within five feet of the setback, they must already be within the setback.
So, per... Per our GIS?
Yeah.
Just a quick measurement off of our GIS system, the house is 14 feet from the road currently.
And what's the setback?
25.
So, they're already in the setback.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thanks. So, they're just extending it another...
Sorry, I thought you were asking if it was conforming to the setback currently.
No problem. So, and how much further out is the porch going from now? Sorry if you already said... I'm just getting my brain wrapped around it.
You mean from the house to only six feet?
Six additional feet.
It's only six feet out.
Got it.
Yeah.
And the width of it is no further than the current width of the house?
Correct. Correct.
Like I said, my measurement was off of our GIS, so it's...
It's not a survey, but it's pretty good.
Do we have any other questions?
Can I see the map of the neighborhood?
Are there two buildings on your lot?
There's the garage.
Okay. That's a garage, okay.
Yeah.
Big garage.
Thanks, Stephanie.
How long have you guys... Have you guys lived here? Just... You just moved here or you...?
We moved here... We moved there in '21.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Are we good? Everyone good?
Good.
Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome.
You may... You may step down.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any... For staff, are there any ADA ramifications in a case like this? Or is that... Sorry if it was already in your memo. There's a lot of cases.
She wrote the memo, so she's more fluid.
Yes, there's... As the memo, the staff memo kind of pointed out, there is a particular RSA 67433, which is a version of the hardship, but it's five, which discusses that for a situation for a ramp for accessibility, and I'm paraphrasing, but it's 674335, is that the outlook doesn't have to prove the hardship. So, it's... It's where you go through 633... Excuse me. The regular variance criteria, they would have to get... You have to prove a hardship, something you name with the land, something you name with the property, things like that. But if you're moving to go under the 6735, then with the ramp, for the accessibility purposes and for access, they don't have to prove a hardship. The ZBA has the ability to place a condition on this particular approval if you want to do it under five, that the ramp exists as long as the need is there. So, you have the option of approving this application.
When he moves out, the ramp has to come down.
Oh, it's as long as...
You have the option of doing that under five. So, the board can choose whichever way they would like to consider this application.
But I don't think that's what Andrew was asking. I think you were asking, are there ADA standards to which the porch would need to be built?
No, I was asking if...
Is that what you... Okay.
If there was some special consideration.
They would get through the building permit and things like that, yes. The ADA accessibility returns and the rise of...
But if we could... If we think we can grant it under the typical grounds, then that would be preferable for them because then they wouldn't have to potentially tear it down.
Correct.
Correct.
Got it.
Correct. There's either... That's what the staff report spoke about. Is that if the board chooses, you could do either where if there was... If you're having a hard time getting to the hardship, 6735 is there where they don't have to have it. With the caveat that once the need isn't there anymore, that the ramp would, you know, could be removed. If you do it under the normal hardship clause where there is a hardship to the property and approve it that way, where then it would stay.
Got it. Sorry, I must have missed... I... There was a lot... There was a lot of cases. I must have missed the memo on that one. I apologize.
That's okay.
Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of the application? Please step... Let me make sure there's no one else. Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition?
Yes.
Please come forward.
I'm signed in.
So, let's take care of this.
Sure.
Do we swear to tell truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great. Now, state your name for the record, please.
Don Wilson, and I live at 12 Marion. I join 14 Marion.
Yep, so you're the butler. So, tell us why you're in opposition to this application.
Okay. Well, I've lived... Called this my home for about 65 years. So, I know the neighborhood very well. And I can tell you that Concord has done a really good job of improving development in the area from Mulberry Street all the way over to Plum Street with Airport Road. And the houses are typically approaching like a half a million dollars now in range. If you note across the street from this applicant, that's 13. That just sold for $520,000. The people have been there less than a year, yes, right there. And my main opposition to this variant, these two variances, is that it brings the development and the quality of housing in the area backward instead of forward. Because as you were trying to figure out, the... This house is already in the setback. So, that is it's out of compliance because of its age. It was built like 1950 or something like that. And they are trying to extend this house. It's been portrayed as a porch, but you'll note that the six feet out is the entire length of the house. So, it's... It's... I believe they're trying to get an extension, build an addition of this home and do a workaround, meaning the house is not in compliance with the setbacks. And they're making it worse. So, it's... If you note some of the other information, they were stating that they believed it was improving the area. For instance, when I say that if you look on Airport Road next to Mulberry Street, for instance, there are two small homes that are very close to Airport Road. You'd call them like cottages. Now, they would never be allowed. One of the... Two of the few that are, you know, just put so close to the road. And I think Concord has, in developing the area, they've gotten... They've been able to improve that and people like that. Let's see, where is it going to go next?
So, you're... Are you suggesting that if the porch close to the road is going to detract from the appeal of the neighborhood?
Yes.
And reduce the property lines?
Oh, yes.
Is that kind of where you're getting at?
Because it's so... It's turning it into a box. It's so... It's bringing it so much closer to the road. I think if you do the math, maybe it's just five feet back from the city line. Is that correct? I don't...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's very close. And you note that it's being called a porch, but it's the whole length of the house. And it's... And you were looking for drawings. I actually got two drawings from the next door. I don't know if you'd like to see them, but this is what they gave to the permit department.
Copy that again.
Okay.
Is that okay?
So, those are in the permit department. And so, they're incorporating this like it's an add-on to the house. It's making the house bigger, you know? And I'm totally for people that have issues with disability. I have a physical disability. My... I can tell you this just in a short background. This house was owned by the Toll family for over 50 years. And he had two strokes. He completely ramped this house. You'll note in this section here, he has ramps on the side of the house, which is the main door. There's no front door in the street side. If you pull that, you'll see... If you go up a little bit, you'll see... I'll point out the side door. That's the front, which facing the street, there's no door. So, this is no hardship to them because there is no door. They bought this with the house complete like this. If you look on the side going to the... Yeah, there you go. So, this is the main door facing the driveway. And you'll notice now, that's the whole ramp system of the previous owner who died now. If you go to the right, you see that wood ramp. So, that house is ramped. There you go. So, it's ramped into the house for convenience, for walkers or anything. And you'll note going to the back, the outside areas of sitting areas, that's another gazebo. They're all ramped. This was already set up for handicap purposes. So, the...
And that ramp's still there?
Actually, I was going to get this because I feel it's a little bit of a red herring here about the throwing in about a ramp with this when the applicant's own words on this first finding of fact, they put right on it. They weren't of what they... They said, "The spirit of the ordinance would be observed" because... And they state, "There will still be plenty of buffer for property lines." But then it's going... Oh, "The values of surrounding properties would not be diminished" because... And they go... would not be diminished," because, and they go, "A front porch adds great curbside appeal." Well, this box extension is coming practically into the street. But getting back to this other portion, which you were asking me about, the ramp. The, these, these applicants, after this picture was taken, they spent thousands on a huge aluminum ramp system, which if you go into the next picture, you have it on this, this form here. You'll note that, see this yellow block right there? Because I think this is an important thing to note. You see this, this down schematic? Can you pull that up on the screen? Yes, I don't know, can you blow that up, so you can see the house as you're doing it before? Yeah, go in on that as much as you can. Yeah, and go, if you could go any further in, so you can see the house and the garage clearly, the yellow one. Yeah, okay, that's good enough. You'll know, now this, this was here just until a little while ago. You see this huge U that is aluminum between the garage and the house? That was a very expensive ramping system that these applicants put in to give access to the rear part of the property, which is the boardwalk gazebo, there's the sitting areas, et cetera, and it went right to the driveway. So that was the improvement. So when you're talking about, there's no hardship. They actually made it even better than it was for a handicapped person before. And so this was yanked out, for whatever reason, just recently. And I, and I didn't know until I got this letter in the mail saying that they're trying to put this addition on. And I feel that that's actually just a pretense to build out a big house, because as you see, there's, oh, by the way, it's not just this, but presently, which there isn't a picture of, you see the ramp system there. But that side, if you pull up the side of the house again, which is another page, you'll see, they actually have, yeah, go to the, to the side, that's the front, there you go. So see, that's the, the previous owner's ramp. They have aluminum ramps there now, going to the driveway. So they, they improved the, the house that they bought, two years ago, by the way. I don't think it's 21, I think it's 23. Couple of years back, they improved it. So that ramp is gone. They have much more expensive aluminum ramping that goes to the driveway. And like I say, there's, there was a huge aluminum U-shaped ramping system to come out to the driveway that goes into that door. And this is the home that was bought. And now they've moved in, and they've had the time to think, how can we get this house bigger when our ordinances keep all the newer homes from building into the street? So I am, my father was a Purple Heart Korean War veteran. I'm all for people getting what they need. Hopefully, I won't need it worse than a cane. But I'm trying to point out that we should put this, when this, when the lady here is pointing out that you could actually bypass what would be really pretty strong residential ordinances for, well, if there's something written in there, if you've got right ramp in there with the porch, then it's, you can bypass it all and give it to them, or you can say handicap, and then you can just avoid the, what you would normally say is, we want to comply with good housing. Because I can tell you, most of those neighbors in the expensive homes, they don't have the time to come over here tonight, like I do, but I know what they're thinking. If, if they see, you know, things like this pop up, they go, what are we doing? Because I know the new neighbors across the street, they work on their yard every day. They spent 520, and they'll probably sell it for 700,000, especially after Concord raises the tax rates next year. So I won't go on and on, but I hope you can see a bigger part of the picture here, that, you know, I'm all for giving people that have hardship something to go with. On the other hand, I'm saying, if they don't really have hardship, why play that pity card? Because my family never has. My mother was blind for 15 years and the end of her life. She did not ask for ramps. You know, she just said, "Take my hand."
I think we've got your point.
Okay, thank you. I'm done. Any questions from, from me?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against this application? Mr. and Mrs. Aldrich, would you like to offer us some factual rebuttal as to what you heard?
Yeah, I just wanted to see.
You can come up, yeah, just, you don't both have to come up, you can.
All I got to say is that since we moved there, he hasn't been a very friendly laborer. Tried to say hi to him, give you a look like, I don't want to say it, but he's, he's sad that the part of the other family, the Towels, died. Okay, I understand that, because he's been living there for a long time, it's his childhood. But he's on my property and tried to look at some of the, you know, like being nosy, I guess you want to say? And I told him, I go, and it was like 6:00 in the morning, and I go, "What are you doing?"
I, I believe you, but putting aside the, you know, the personalities involved, can you address some of what? The one thing I wanted to ask you about what he said is, because now that, now that I'm looking at it, and he was pointing out, you were saying that you're going to build the porch, and it would lead into the front door, but it does look like it's more in the, I guess what would be considered the back of the house. Am I wrong?
No, no, it's the front of the house.
You're adding.
Just adding a.
You're going to add a, but, so you take, you're going to take out this tree and all this?
No, 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 hallelujah, no, 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 we're not taking out no trees.
They're going to take out the picture window and add a front door to the house.
Oh, it won't go out far enough to get all that?
No, it's only going, like I said, the rocks that you saw is exactly where the porch is going, nowhere else.
We should go to the picture, probably.
So you're going to build a front door? Okay.
Where's the picture, the picture of my, of the house that I, the, um... Yeah, right there, see? So.
Oh, the one of, the picture I have on the map here, there's a bunch of landscaping.
So what you see is just where the rocks are, is where the porch is going.
Oh, you got yours from Google Map.
Which is two years old, if you look. Yeah. Or even older than that. Yeah, I got you.
It's a red house there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because we've.
You excited it?
We did a lot, no, we did a lot of renovation. It was a very, very old house that.
So you tore out all that landscaping, you're going to build, you're going to build a front door where the window is, the porch?
Yeah.
So the porch would take up approximately where that rock, where the rocks are?
From, see where the white post is?
Yep.
Can I get up there?
Sure, please.
Okay.
Sorry to belabor this.
Here. Right here. All the way down.
Wait, what do you mean, all the way down?
Well.
All the way down the length of it, but how far out will it come past those rocks?
Oh, right here, right up to here.
Right to where the rocks?
Inside.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So from there to there, and then all the way to the house.
Okay.
Got it.
Makes sense?
Yep.
What else would you like us, what else would you like us to know in rebuttal of what you heard? Is there anything else?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I don't have anything else to say. I'm happy where I am.
Good.
Thank you.
Code Enforcer, what do we think? Any comments?
No, just again, if the board can, you know, consider the recommendations in the staff memo, which will cite the two RSAs, and, and make your decision from, from the options that you have, for which you're going to reply for this case.
So actually, now I see the staff memo, their link is actually broken. What's the RSA?
It's 674, I make it my glasses on.
33, paragraph 5.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it said 33, okay, I was in the heritage stuff.
You bring the book? Of course. Where are you?
Bring it up. You go, look at this. A statue here?
Yeah, it's crazy.
No, but this is, this.
There you go, Andrew.
Oh, you got the.
I got the book.
You guys are making me look like.
She's got the bigger book.
They're bringing all kinds of books.
Well, you know, I live with the book.
Yeah.
There you go, right there.
Thank you.
So I'm going to declare the hearing closed since this is discussion part.
Yep.
It's, the ADA part is?
674335.
Oh, gotcha, okay, thanks.
It's part of the same hardship criteria, it's just kind of at the end.
Is it unnecessary to allow a person with recognized physical? Survive as long as this particular person.
Yep, thanks. All right, Andrew, let's start with you.
Oh, God. I love when, when there's like this backstory of these neighbors who don't get along, not that it really matters, but... I do think the butter, although I, I believe that he might be a little cranky for no good reason, had made some good points. It did bring up a lot of the, the history. That makes me wonder how much, because if, on the other hand, you know, the setback, the city takes up so much land, that when you actually look at the yard, the setback is, there's still going to be a lot of yard space there, so.
In the back, yeah.
In the back, but also even in the front, because they're only going up to those rocks in this, even though they're five feet from the setback, the city has a whole nother, I think, 10 feet of land that's into their yard. And if you look at their yard.
It's pretty close to the edge.
From that one it does, but if you pull up like the, the front shots.
Okay, I get you.
Yeah, can you pull up the one of the, the picture? It's only going to go up to those rocks, you're still going to have quite a bit of front yard, so I'm a little dubious that it's going to make that much of a bad presentation. I. The GAS might just be off a little bit. Yeah. There's still going to be all that yard, it's only going to take up where the rocks are. So I, but on the other hand, I mean, they already have a ramp, so I don't know. Kind of, I'm not really sure. Um, are you? I'm good, yes.
I could see the hardship in the sense that the applicant has the right to change the primary entrance of the home to the front, in which case they would need some kind of accommodation, whether that's the entire porch or just a ramp. So I'm inclined to support it.
I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I mean, adding a front porch is certainly a reasonable use of the property. I don't think adding a porch is going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood. I don't think it's going to diminish surrounding property values. And I don't think there's a lot of justice in denying the variance. And the property is somewhat unique in the fact the house is already in the setback. On the other hand, the house is already in the setback, so you are making a non-conforming structure more non-conforming by granting this. And if the reason you want the porch is to sit outside, well, you have a very lovely backyard to sit outside in. And if the other reason you need the porch is to access driveway or the outside, well, you have a ramp to access the backyard and the outside. And we are supposed to be bringing non-conformities more into compliance than out of compliance. And so that is where I'm struggling with granting the variance.
I don't know if it's a hardship, and I'm trying to say, it's cur, it's an oddity, and Andrew made this observation, that this looks like it's the back of the house, not the front of the house.
Right.
So I think there's some, brings some value to the neighborhood by having a presentation of a home with a front door
Right.
in a porch, so I think that offsets whatever the impacts might be to the neighborhood for that. But again, that wasn't in the record, that's kind of my observation of it, but they did talk about creating the front porch. So I did, you know, we approved something early today with no frontage, right? So, you know, there's the need for some flexibility when it's an older neighborhood that was built before the ordinances were in place, so I'm inclined to support it. I tend to lean with what Jim said about creating a different appearance for the front. So I'd be inclined to support the request.
And, and just to be clear, you're supporting under the, the standard variance section, not under?
Yeah, I'm not going to exert authority to require them to remove the handicap access, it's fine.
They meet the standard. Yeah, I mean, like about half their front yard is actually technically part of the city right away. So.
It's a weird, yeah.
So.
Is it in the setback? Yeah, I know, I know.
So, so the five feet, I mean, it is still invasive in the setback, but it's not on a percentage basis as extreme as the first appears. So. I, now, I mean, they're not asking for an addition, as the neighbor kind of implied, they're, you know, they'd have to come back for anything different than this. They're not asking for any enclosed property, so I think that, I think in a, you know, a porch. I, I kind of agree with what, what Market said, that if they're going to make it part of the front yard, that's a reasonable use.
And to the butter's point, they won't be the first or the last homeowner to make their front porch flush with the whole frontage of the structure.
Right, even if they, if they do a porch, if they're going to put a front door there, they would at least come out with a stoop or something that would be just as far out.
Jim, if you make a motion, I'll vote in favor of it.
I'd like to make the motion, but the link to the staff memo is not working in my agenda, so I don't have the proper.
Yeah, I think it's something temporary with the city website.
Yeah, because I can open our regular PDF version of it. Do you want, want me to pull it up for you?
Luckily.
I'm going to let.
I'm old school.
Not old, but old school.
But I only have one variance, are there two?
Yes.
But they're both the side setback and the front, and the front setback?
Oh, okay.
It's 4.7.
Seven and eight.
4.7, yeah, thank you, 4.7 and 4.8 on the agenda.
Okay. I move that we grant the variance from Section 2841D3, front setback and side setback?
Yeah, inside setback.
And side setback, Table of Dimensional Regulations, according to the provisions of RSA 67433, to prevent, to permit a front setback of 10 feet and a side setback of 10 feet?
No.
No.
So they're, they're two separate cases, so the first motion should be to allow for a.
Oh, a side setback of four feet?
A side setback of five feet, I believe it was.
Five feet.
Five feet?
Yeah.
Okay. A front setback of 10 feet?
No. A front setback of five feet and a side setback of 10 feet.
Okay, to permit a front setback of five feet and a side setback of 10 feet. Because all of the criteria under RSA 67433 have been met for the reasons stated by the board and based on the record before us, and I move to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
Second.
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead.
Would you second it? Any discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries five to nothing. Okay. I was going to step away, but it's going to create a full member board. Okay, so.
You got to do.
Mr. Walker.
I know. That's, that's why I was saying it needs to be one motion, because you only opened one of the cases. You didn't open both cases, so now you have to hear the second case.
I did open them, I read them both.
You did read them both?
Yeah.
Okay, so now you need a. Why do we need two motions?
Because they're two separate cases on the agenda.
He read them in together, it was 4.7, 4.8. But you need two separate motions, because it's two separate cases.
Okay, we always do them as, okay.
They're still here.
I move to grant the motion for the front setback for the reasons stated by the board and move to adopt the reasons set forth by the applicants.
I'll second that.
Again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries on the second one.
I move to grant the side setback for the reasons stated by the board and the reasons set forth by the applicants in their application.
I'll second.
Aye.
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 You've got to simplify these rules.
Well, they're, they're what we've been doing since I started.
So, um...
You did, the, the first one you did right. But because there's two different applications, four-seven and four-eight, so we only needed one more to do the side.
So we're all good?
You're all good.
We're all good.
You couldn't do one, you couldn't do one motion for both applications.
So we have an issue coming up. Uh, Mr. Walker, uh, one of our members needs, is unfortunately, has to leave us, so we're going to be down to a four-member board. That means you need at least three of us to con- to, to grant it. And it's not grounds for a rehearing if we deny it, if it, if the vote is two to two. You are, I, please step forward. And then let me re- so we have three variances, and I'm going to read them, but I'm going to sort of combine them.
Hi, Jim.
All right, so we now have, uh, four point nine Kevin Walker, on behalf of property owner Flatley Concord Center LLC, request a variance from Article twenty-eight-six signs, Section twenty-eight-six-nine-A, Table of Maxima, sign dimensions for non-residential district to allow freestanding sign with a height of forty feet where twenty feet is required and area of two hundred feet where one hundred feet is required. Additionally, um, four, four point ten, uh, the applicant requested variance from Article twenty-eight-six signs, Section twenty-eight-six-nine-C-three, permitted freestanding signs to allow horizontal dimensional of twenty-two feet where sixteen feet is required for proposed freestanding sign. And finally, uh, request four point one-one, request a variance from Article twenty-eight-six-C-signs, Section twenty-eight-six-nine-C-seven, permitted sign, freestanding signs to allow a third freestanding sign on property of less than ten acres and less than a hundred thousand feet of street frontage. All of this property is known as tax map and lot six-four-one-four-Z-seventy-eight, located at Ten Ferry Street in the Opportunity Corridor, performance OCT District, not a development of regional impact, ZBA, uh, oh-three-three-five, ZBA oh-three-three-six, ZBA oh-three-three-seven, twenty-twenty-five.
We did this already.
Couple years ago.
Why are we doing it again? It expired and you didn't come back in time.
The, well, I don't know. You want...
So, um, there was already an extension. The extension ran out. It was also cited incorrectly. So even though...
It was what?
It was cited incorrectly.
Cited to the public, posted to the public incorrectly.
You mean back when we first granted it? We, this is...
No, the second time you granted it.
There was something about a utility poll.
Because they had to move it, the second time you granted it for the location move-al. One was referencing ADRC, the other one was, which had nothing to do with what they were asking for, and the other one had, had just missed the, the height requirement.
We hated this variance.
You're never going to put this sign up, just a bit. I'm just kidding.
Like, we're already digging, we're already going to...
I'm just, I'm sorry.
So, so essentially, yes, you're rehearing the same cases that you've already heard before, it's just cleaning everything up to be approved, plus they had already...
We blame you, can we be mad at you?
I think I was...
That was him.
Be mad at one of our previous zoning administrators that just looked the wrong references.
So I was on the first case, but I know it wasn't on the second case, I don't think. Second time around.
But it's all the same sign.
Mr. Walker's been here, this will be his fourth trip for this post.
Nice to see you all again.
Um, he had, we granted the variance, requested an extension. He started his construction, prior to that extension expiring. In review of his new permit to put all this in, because he needed a permit to support the variances, they realized that there was a citing error as far as administratively. We cited the wrong portion of the sign regulation. Fairly minor, I'm not positive it would need a correction in that. But he agreed to come back, we said, we'll just do all three again, just so that it's all in one package. But technically, he needs one of them that was cited wrong, because he's already started construction, he has substantial work being done in the correct time.
And, and you voted on the correct variance requests last time I was here. It was just advertised incorrectly, apparently.
I did not confirm that.
If I recall going back to the first time, the only, the only people who had a concern were the Kimball Jenkins and that, you kind of resolved it with them, right?
Yeah, they were fine with everything.
And they've been continuing to get all the notices, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's all, uh, Butters notices, same thing, yeah.
I remember, I had a big issue about safety, driver distraction that this sign would create, but I think I ended up voting for it.
Yes, you did.
Not reluctantly, yeah.
We were all reluctant, but we all voted for it.
And I've had some near misses, I've had some near misses on, on that road since then. And if you look at the road, you'll see my skid marks are still there.
Did we impose conditions of approval?
Uh, po- I don't think there were any, I don't believe, I remember something.
But I think if I recall what had convinced me, I'm kind of shortcutting a few things, but just to make the, you know, record of what my thought process was, was the... It's a huge grade issue, right?
You needed the height.
You needed the height, because otherwise you wouldn't get...
Right, but, but the forty, the forty-foot height puts the bottom of the sign just at, you know, just above...
No.
The sightline of a vehicle.
The twenty-twenty-two variance, so that was the twenty-twenty-two one?
Do we want to hear on this?
Do we have to like...
You still have to open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Already did.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
At Butters and, and whatnot, and, I mean, that's up to you guys if you want to get in the weeds on it.
Okay.
Well, I think we can, we can say for the record that we all clearly recall them for multiple other times they've been here, and so we can kind of consider...
Were you here?
I don't remember, I was just trying to think, like, I don't...
You would remember, you were here.
I was here for one of them, but I don't think we voted on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You would remember.
It was, but it's over ninety-three.
It started when Laura Scott was on the board. That's how old this is.
Started in twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, Doug Richardson, who doesn't work for our company anymore, started it, he had the sign in a, in a certain location. It turned out it was in the middle of a sewer easement.
Right, I remember that, that's why...
He didn't decide to look into that or anything, because why do that, so...
So it was former staff, former applicants.
And everything is fixed and everything is the way it should be, so...
Well, do we have any further questions of the applicant? Andrew? Mark?
So the, the sign itself is essentially the same that we previously...
Everything's the same.
Yeah.
Same sign, if, if you really want, want to put it on the record, we went to architectural review, and at the bottom we had something about the city of Concord. They said they didn't want that on there. We took it off, the approved sign from that, uh, that board is in, is in the application. The size is the same, it's still ten by twenty, the height is, uh, can be a maximum of forty feet. It may be a little less, but it's, you know, more than forty feet.
Can, can you just re- sorry to, um...
No problem.
The height, I, I remember perfectly what, what our reasoning was. Can you just repeat what the justification is for the, for the, um, size? Or no, I, I'm sorry, for the, the third freestanding?
It was, it, the...
Yeah.
Are you talking about why they need to come back, or...
No, why they need three.
What the original justification for it? I, I see the height, but I guess the second, the second one is the fact that you're getting three signs instead of, um, what would nor- would normally be two?
Yes, on less than ten acres with less than a thousand feet of frontage.
What was your, what was your rationale for why that was appropriate? Do you remember?
Well, I think, I mean, the rationale was, had more to do with the, the frontage. It's, it's Ten Ferry Street, it's a fifty-foot right of way. The building's like a zillion feet long, the property's a zillion feet long.
Oh, your, oh, your frontage is absurdly small relative, because, because most of the building doesn't technically...
Exactly, yeah. The, the property is very, very long, but it doesn't, it has a little bit of frontage, um, on the highway, and only a fifty feet of frontage or forty feet of frontage on Ferry Street. So that's what that was.
Got it.
Are we good?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Stay right there, let me go through the motions. Anyone who wants to speak in favor? Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Code enforcement, comments? Seeing none?
Do you need three separate motions?
I'll declare the hearing closed, and we'll go through the three motions. Hopefully one of you is willing to do that.
I'll take them.
Thank you.
I move to grant the variance from Article twenty-eight-six signs, Section twenty-eight-six-nine-A, Table of Maximum Sign Dimensions for Non-Residential Districts to allow a freestanding sign with a height of forty feet where twenty feet is allowed and an area of two hundred feet where one hundred feet is allowed at Ten Ferry Street, because all of the criteria under RSA six seventy-four thirty-three have been met, based on the record before us, and to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries on item four point nine, four to nothing.
Let me find the next one. I move to grant the variance from Article twenty-eight-six signs, Section twenty-eight-six-nine-three-C, permitted freestanding signs to allow a horizontal dimension of twenty-two feet where sixteen feet is allowed for a proposed freestanding sign at Ten Ferry Street, because all of the criteria under RSA six seventy-four thirty-three have been met, based on the record before us, and to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries four to nothing on item four point one oh. And finally?
I move to grant the variance from Article twenty-eight-six signs, Section twenty-eight-six-nine-C-seven, permitted freestanding signs to allow a third freestanding sign on a property of less than ten acres and less than a thousand feet of street frontage at Ten Ferry Street, because all of the criteria under RSA six seventy-four thirty-three have been met, based on the record before us, and to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries four to nothing.
Right, thank you, I appreciate it.
What's your signs?
Enjoy your digging.
See you next year.
All right.
Have a good Thanksgiving. Thank you, I appreciate it.
And last but not least, uh... Item four point one-two, Aaron Haruna Dramech?
Yes.
Thank you for your patience.
Request a variance from Article twenty-eight-four Development Design Standards, Section twenty-eight-four-one-D-three, Minimum Side Yard Requirements, H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to permit the location of a carport to be located five feet from the side property line where fifteen feet is required. The property is known as tax map and lot twenty-two oh-three slash P thirty-four, located at Thirteen Wildflower Drive in the single-family RS District, not a development of regional impact, ZBA oh-three-three-eight-two oh-two-five. Do we swear to tell truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please tell us your name for the record.
My name is Aaron Drama, I'm the property owner, Thirteen Wildflower Drive.
All right, tell us what you'd like to do.
Uh, we're looking to install the carport, however, we, uh... Ten feet, uh, short of the, uh, side setback between us and the neighbors to the left. Uh, the carport is twenty by twenty, uh, it's going to be metal frame, uh, the, the roof will be the same color as the siding of our house, so it will be, uh, not awkward, um, view in the area. And also, um, it's not a permanent structure, so at some point, if we want to remove it, we can remove it anytime. It's going to be anchored on the ground, uh, using, in ogre anchors into the, uh, ground.
Wow.
I can, I can go and, uh, describe what it's like, if you want to scroll down. Oh, uh, by the way, if you go up, I'm going to describe something between us and, uh, our neighbors. So... So there are trees between, um, our property and the neighbors, it's not visible. Uh, our house is not that visible from them, and their property is, um, constructed at an angle, so we don't believe there'll be an extension in, from their direction.
So will the carport be over where that, that car is right now?
Yes, uh, little, uh, back in line with the house, so the, it will line up at the front of the house.
Line up?
Over the existing driveway?
Yeah, it's in the existing driveway, yes.
This is a sidewalk, right?
No, uh...
A walkway?
It's a walkway?
Yeah. No, that's a street, is it?
Right here?
Yes.
This is your car?
Yeah, that's the car.
So this is a walkway?
To your house?
Yeah, yeah, that's a walkway to the front house.
So carport would be just in this area?
No, will be further back towards the, uh... Yeah, right there.
So it's not going to go in the front setback, but it'll go into the side setback?
Yeah.
But you've got, you're not going to, are you have, going to have to cut down any of those trees, or no?
Uh, we're looking to trim them. Uh, the problem is, uh, the, some of those trees are dropping sap onto our cars, and...
Sure.
At, at some point, we use, uh, windshield wiper, and that was the big... That's one of the reasons we, uh, wanted to put this carport in, to prevent that, also to prevent the cars from being, uh, damaged. And, uh, but we are arranging to, uh, trim the trees. We don't want to, um, cut them, because they provide shelter for some wildlife.
But so, so but there'll still be a pretty substantial wood line in between the carports? So your neighbor really wouldn't be able to see the carport at all?
No, not, not in the summer, no.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably in the fall.
It wouldn't, right.
All right, so...
And there's no other place you can put the carport, really, is there?
No, that's the only place I can put it. Um, on the, on the driveway, it doesn't matter where I put it, I will still run into the setback.
Right.
Is the character of your neighborhood such that people, other people have seen the carports or garages?
Uh, we, one time we drove, and we have seen some in, in the driveways, yeah. Not in our, um, not in, right in our neighborhood behind.
We good? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I, I know what the answer is, but I'll go through the motions anyway. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of the application or in opposition to the application? Seeing none? Code enforcement, any comments? Also seeing none, declare the hearing closed, and, uh, look for comments from our board members.
Do you want me to just do it?
I think we're all nodding our heads, so, yeah.
It will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, because a carport is a reasonable residential use. It is not going to diminish surrounding property values, because as he said, it is a structure that can be removed at any time. Um, it is, there's no substantial justice in enforcing the side setback here, and there is a hardship given the location of the house and the existing driveway on the lot.
Yeah, and to be consistent, we pretty routinely grant some applications when it's either a driveway or sometimes a carport that we think is a reasonable use of the property, and, you know, building it accessible from the driveway is the most logical place to put it, so we think that's a reasonable use, and it would be a hardship not to allow it.
It'd be in violation, even if you only build a one-car carport.
Yep. So... So was that a motion?
Yes.
No, I can make the motion. I move to grant the variance from Section twenty-eight-four-one-D-three, side setback, H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to permit a five-foot setback Regulations, to permit a five-foot setback where 15 feet is required for the construction of a carport at 13 Wildflower Drive in the single-family residential district, because all of the criteria under 67433 have been met, based on the comments of the board members and on the record before us, and I move to adopt the applicant's proposed findings as the board's findings of fact.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
It is a giant bug that has been flying around the whole meeting.
You haven't seen it?
Was that included in the records in the minutes?
Who was the second? I was interrupted by a bug.
Andrew was the second.
All right, so we need to review...
I've seen it all night.
You're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
I thought, I thought your chair was...
I thought she filled it first.
So, can you bring up the, the minutes for September 3, and tell us who was there? Because I need that, we need to review and accept that. Meanwhile, October 1, who was there? Let's get that one done, and I'll tell you about September.
I was in...
I've got it right here.
I was not, it was October 1st.
I was here, but I honestly don't.
I'm pulling it up.
Thank you.
October 1st, all of you were here except for James.
Oh, okay.
I was here.
I just know it wasn't in September.
September 3, it was just you, Mr. Wallner, Mr. Winters, and Mr. Monahan.
Oh, yeah, oh, we remember that one.
Yes, we do.
So we can't approve it, can we?
I think we hunted it to this month because we didn't have the full people that were present at that meeting in September.
We only need two people to approve that second minutes, don't we?
You don't actually need to approve minutes at all.
I think we had that discussion last month, too, yeah.
But we're just accepting them, not approving.
You don't need to do either.
Really?
Accepting them is approving them, so they'll come out a draft form and then be put on the record. That's the technical, cleaning up.
Well, if there aren't two of us, we can still do, two of us can still do that.
I don't see why not.
I don't see a reason.
You don't have to do it, why not?
I just haven't seen them. I think I'm out of the habit, because they're not...
Sent to us.
Yeah.
The draft only goes to the chair, it doesn't go to the rest of us.
Oh.
No, no.
Just gets, it's on the website.
I just posted it on the city's website.
Right, right, and it was explained why that's the better practice, so I'm just out of the habit of looking at them.
I think the issue was, it was sent to all of us, Chris would send comments to everyone, and that's a violation of the right to no law, so...
Okay, so it's okay to send them to us, we just shouldn't reply all?
Correct.
But you could have them in your, we could put them in your packet, or reminder...
Yeah, do you mind just that way, yeah, but...
That would be great.
They are linked to the agenda. I don't know why the September 3rd link went missing, because it was a previous link.
We'll add them to the packet in the future.
So I could have opened it up that way, okay.
So...
Anything with a blue hyperlink on the agenda, you can click and go into.
I'm learning.
Well, I re...
Why don't we do them next month?
Let's put it off till next month, because I just wanted...
I mean, there are three sets to do.